Good evening. Sorry. This meeting will be called to order. This is a regular public meeting of the Oakland Board of Education. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided. On a roll call, please. I'll just hold it. Mrs. Ezekiel. Mrs. Papel. Mr. Stotts. Jen is late. Mr. McMillan. Mrs. Marmian. Mr. Schaefer. Mrs. Butchko. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. There's no executive session at this time. So for Section 3, we have the District Test Report. Although we did talk in committee about doing that.
Yeah, we're going to go into Committee of the Whole and then do it all together.
Perfect, okay. So.
You want to give me a motion?
Yeah, so we're going to go on the Committee of the Whole and then do the presentation there. Is there a motion to go into Committee of the Whole?
So moved.
So moved. Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are now in Committee of the Whole. And Mr. Yamamoto, can you come and share the report with us? And I'm going to move out of the way. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I'm going to present Collingwood's District Test Report for the 2023-2024 school year. Now, this presentation will focus on the secondary students only. So very similar to Oakland, Collingwood also gave a number of state assessments from the ACCESS test, the DLM, the NJGPA, and the NJSLA. During this presentation, I'll go over the purpose of those tests. I'll also talk about their performance levels and share some district and student group results. There's also a NJDO regulation that I need to talk about that deals with student privacy. Now, throughout this presentation, you'll see a number of bar graphs. All the bar graphs will be involved with student groups, and this color key will be consistent throughout all the graphs. So for instance, when we talk about gender, females will be in green, males will be in yellow. If we go to ethnicity and race, then students who are Hispanic will be in purple, students who are black would be green, and students who are white would be that yellow, and so The NTS reporting, this is that NJDO, oops. This is that NJDO regulation regarding when data can be shown to the public. So there have to be in a student group at least 10 or more students for data to be shared. Again, it's for the student's privacy. So one of the tests given last year was the ACCESS test, all right? It was the same test given here as well. It is for our multilingual learners. Test is given from grades K through 12, and what it does, it measures the English language progress in speaking, listening, reading, and writing. The ACCESS test has six performance levels, from 1 through 6, which is reach, or 1 is This table shows the secondary results for the ACCESS test in Collingwood. For the secondary level, there were 41 multilingual students. Thirteen of them were new to Collingwood last year, and the remaining 28 were with us for two or more years. And in that 28, 11 showed progress, 11 showed progress, with six of them showing more than one year of growth. DLM assessment is an alternate assessment for special education students with the most significant intellectual disabilities. This test is really a replacement for the NJGPA and NJSLA assessments. It is given through grades 3 through 8 in 11, and for science, 5, 8, and 11. The DLM has four performance levels, and we like to see students at the at target or advanced if possible. Very similar to what we showed last year, or last month in Oakland, just same in Collingwood. We don't really have enough students to actually share with the public. All right, so the NJGPA is given to juniors, right? This is the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment. This test is part of the graduation requirements that all students need to do. It's the first pathway. All students actually need to take this test to be eligible for the other two pathways. The second pathway deals with, so if they don't pass the first pathway, which is the NJGPA, they may be able to pass or meet the graduation requirement through like an SAT score or PSAT score, one of those tests. And then the third pathway would be that as a senior, they would go through a, oh, sorry, it's went out of my head. Thank you. They would do a appeals class and do a portfolio, and then this information is shared with So the NJGPA basically just has two performance levels. It really shows if the students are graduation-ready or not yet graduation-ready. Students need to score 725 or higher to be considered or to meet that graduation requirement. This table shows how Collingwood compared to New Jersey. So for both Language Arts and Math, we are above the state average. So that is really the bright news. But I will say that we do have some work to do in math. I mean, so we have 58.7, so let's say just about 6 out of 10 students are passing, but we still have 40% more to really get over that hump. This is a three-year comparison for the NJGPA. I will say for both Math and Language Arts, we are trending in the right direction. Now, some of you may have noticed that from 21, 22 to 22, 23, there was a significant jump. And I'd like to say we found the magic key to, you know, to do well on a test. But the rationale for that is in 21, 22, the cutoff score was 750, and then for 22, 23, it was 725, so they dropped it down. So from this slide and the next four slides, we'll talk about student, student groups. This first one deals with gender. This one, they're pretty close, but you will start seeing a pattern in terms of some academic disparities. But in terms of gender for NJGPA, they are pretty similar. These graphs show student groups for ethnicity and race. We have the Language Arts on the left and the Math on the right. Like the key shows, the purple shows students proficiency rate for those who are Hispanic in purple. The green shows students who are black, and then the white would be in yellow. And you can really start seeing it in the Math side where there is a gap between how well white students performed as well as students of color. This graph shows the NJGPA for students who are economically disadvantaged. Those students are shown in the yellow. And this last one for the NJGPA shows students who have IEPs. Again, students with IEPs are in yellow. Now, in the Math one, you may say, well, wait a second, only one student out of 25 met the graduation requirement. On the NJGPA, I will say it is yes, but there are alternative pathways that students can meet that requirement. And last year, 23 out of 25 students with IEPs did graduate. The NJSLA is the assessment that Oakland also gives. It is a test that goes from grades 3 through 9 for Math and Language Arts and 5, 8, and 11 for Science. It's a little different when Math gets to the upper grades because some eighth graders and then high school students, they take the Algebra 1, Geometry, Algebra 2, which are called like end-of-year tests. So it's a little different than like a grade-level test. The NJSLA Science has four performance levels, and we want to see students in Level 3 and Level 4. To reach Level 3, students need to score at least 200 or higher. This table again shows the comparison of how Collingwood did last year to New Jersey, as well as a three-year comparison. So in 11th grade, again, we are trending in the right direction, somewhat in 8th grade. And even though we passed the state assess, passed the state average, I really am a little bit upset with the state with this because what they're basically saying is in 8th grade, 2 out of 10 students, or not even 2 out of 10 students are passing their 8th grade test out of all the students in New Jersey. In 11th grade, we're talking about 3 out of 10. So there is something that the state really needs to start working on in terms of that assessment, in terms of what standards they're using. So next slides will show the NJSLA Science performance, student groups. This is again for gender. Now, you'll see some numbers on the table that are in parentheses. That is the total number of students in that group. Here is the NJSLA Science for Ethnicity and Race. Now, in this table, you do see some Xs, all right? Again, that's to protect student privacy because of either the N size or again, just because we want to make sure that a student's identity remains anonymous. 10, yeah. This table shows our economically disadvantaged students. Again, those are shown in yellow. And this last slide here shows students who have IEPs. Again, those students proficiency is shown in yellow. Moving on to the NJSLA performance levels for Language Arts and Math, in this case, we have five levels. We want to see students in either Level 4 or 5, so meeting or exceeding expectations. And to be able to do that, we're looking for students to score 750 or higher. This table shows the ELA, a three-year comparison, as well as how we compare to New Jersey. And as you look in grades 6 through 8, we did surpass New Jersey. In 6 and 7, Collingwood surpassed New Jersey by a really healthy margin. So I'm really happy to see that. At 9th grade, we're close, so we do have some work there. And actually, if you look at cohorts, in other words, students of the same year, students in the same group, so like in 2023 for 6th grade, moving on to 2024 for 7th grade, all right, so last year, 7th grade, you see an increase in that cohort, all right? And very similar in terms of last year's 8th grade, all right, where we even go back to 2022, all right, so if we look on the diagonal, like 2022, 6th graders, there were 53%. In 2023, there are 64.2%, and in '24, they rose to a 67%, 0.5% passing rate. Wait, I'm sorry.
So last column, the second, 7th grade, so 67.3.
Yep.
Then the next year, there's 65.8, and then there's 55.4, is that the denominator?
I mean, for '22 to '23, that really is the same group. '23, '24, there is a little bit of growth on denominator, yeah. Oops, sorry.
For this one, did the scores drop like it did in the other one? Or was it the same? Remember, you said it dropped from like 750 to 725?
Oh, no, this stayed the same. This was still 750.
Stayed the same, okay.
Oops, sorry. Again, next several slides will show student groups for ELA. This one shows gender. This graph and table shows student groups for Ethnicity and Race. Again, the parentheses in the table represents like the total number. Here is students who are economically disadvantaged.
What is the income threshold that considers you economically? Is there a household?
Students who are on, like, thank you, free and reduced.
Thank you.
And this one shows students with IEPs. This next table is the NJSLA scores for Math. Math is an area that we do need to focus on. I know we kind of said that last year in Oakland. We have to do the same thing in Collingwood as well. I will say that 6th grade and 7th grade did well in terms of the state, but we do have a big drop in 8th grade. We also broke apart the Algebra 1 Middle School and Algebra 1 High School, so let me explain that a little bit. In 6th grade and 7th grade, they take grade-level tests. So if we have accelerated and an academic level for both 6th and 7th grade, but those students still take the same test. When they get to 8th grade, students who are in the honors class, they actually jump and take the, and of course, Algebra 1 test. So you could see that those students really did exceptionally well with almost an 82% The flip side is that the students who are non-honors take the 8th grade test, and that is the area that we definitely need to work on.
For lack of a better term, they take the honor kids, they take the smarter kids away from the 8th grade bracket and put them in the Algebra 1 bracket, and then let the other kids do the 8th grade by them.
Yes, in essence. So they do, they take different tests, so they show different performance rates.
If I'm asking the same question as Jimmy, let me know. But so Algebra 1, Middle School, 66. Those 66 are outside of the total of the 6th, 7th, and 8th grade. So they are 66 separate kids that if that wasn't the case, they would be in the previous three rows?
Only 8th.
In 8th grade.
In 8th grade, thank you.
Right.
Got it. All right, now it makes sense. 66 plus 88 is closer than the other two numbers. Thank you.
And that would make the entire 8th grade. But again, because they take different tests, it's more apparent.
Can I ask one more question? So if I were to look at, let's say, 7th grade 2022 at 32, and then following a non-honors student track, it would go 32, 11.7, and then 15?
So it's, in math, it's very difficult to start looking at cohorts because in 7th grade, when you said 2022 at 32%, that is, that's everybody, yes.
I'm sorry. Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
So the Algebra 1 High School, so is that like the academic level in like a freshman year?
That is made up of academic, but the high school does have an Algebra 1 honors class, like a 9th grade honors class.
Gotcha. Which is different than the 8th grade Algebra 1.
Which is different than the 8th grade Algebra 1, yes.
Okay. So they, in theory, would be taking the same, so that, yeah, I just noticed that's a bigger number.
Yeah, the high school and middle school would take the same Algebra 1 test.
Yeah.
If we had combined those two, I think our percentage would have been 35.7%. But again, this is, we need to do better in Algebra 1.
Yeah. And generally, what grades are geometry? Is that like 10th grade?
So the geometry here would be 9th graders, or, so they're really students who are on a fast track in terms of math, so they're, yeah.
Gotcha. Okay.
Yes. And there are probably some 7th graders mixed in there too. Again, next several slides will be the student groups for NJSLA Math. Here's the one on gender. This one is for Ethnicity and Race. Oh, and let me also state, probably should have stated this a little sooner, but there is a note in the bottom, so in terms, for the privacy piece, like we, even in this one, I had to remove some information because of student privacy. But there are other groups that aren't shown here, like in Asian or Pacific, I mean, so all those groups are just too small to represent. That's why you only see students who are either Hispanic, black, or white. Here's one again for economically disadvantaged. And this one is for students with IEPs. So we're at the point now, you know, several years after COVID, we were working on recovery, trying to catch kids up. I'm happy to say that we're really working on rigorous curriculum, rigorous academic achievement. So that's what we're looking for. We are building more professional learning communities, PLCs. We are supporting, you know, student, school culture and mental health. We're working towards making more inclusive classrooms. So, and just in general, these are things that are like kind of the big picture ideas, specifically in terms of strategies. We did adjust staffing to make sure that we met our student needs. We changed our schedule so that there was more time for teachers to meet and work together. All the buildings, obviously including the Middle School and High School, have key performance indicators. I think we talked about that here in Oakland. It's the same idea. We want to know, we want to set a boundary or guideline, baseline, sorry, baseline, and show improvement from there. Those tie into our Continuous Improvement Guides, which we meet, we meet monthly to talk about improvement. Something really exciting, or at least I think fine exciting, is that we have a new screen here at the secondary level called NWEA MAP, and that will help us really target, look at the data and target our, our information so that we can really focus on students and what they need. Something also a little different is that we are creating an integrated math course. So this course will be in Algebra and Geometry Combination. This will take a two-year span. Ultimately, what this means is that students will take the Algebra 1 test as a sophomore. So they'll have two years to be able to take that test or learn the skill to take that test. And on the Language Arts side, we do have a Language Arts Supplemental, Grade 9, that are really targeted support for students who need that extra help. And we are, in Middle School, we are engaged in a partnership with New Jersey's Coalition of Inclusive Education, all right, where middle school teachers are getting professional Since both District Test Reports go on the website, there are links for people to, if they want to check out more information about the different tests. And I think that's it. So may I ask any other questions? Yeah.
I'm sorry. Can you go back to the Math page? I just have a question about, so if a student is in Algebra 1 in 8th grade, then they take the geometry test. Is there another test after that, or are they retaking tests?
So students in high school only need to take one NJSLA test.
Gotcha.
It is part of a federal requirement that students take a test in elementary level, middle school, and high school.
Gotcha.
This is not part of a graduation requirement at all. That's the NJGPA.
Okay. Got it. So they might not need to take one, and it's, okay, perfect, thank you. So my question, I don't know if this is the right forum for it, so feel free to punt it, but I'm just, we're looking at the, when we're talking about the economically disadvantaged ratios and breakdowns, these are of the students that are meeting or exceeding expectations. It seems to me that in 9th grade, there's a big kind of jump in the ratio of economically disadvantaged and not economically disadvantaged. Can you share what that is for the entire student population for the high school? Is that an unfair question? It may not be, well, I'm just, I just saw a big difference there.
In terms of performance?
Percentage of students? Yeah, yeah.
Oh, percent.
They're roughly 40%, free and reduced.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
All right, we are still in Committee of the Whole. There were, I believe, a couple other agenda items or one other agenda item. One of the things, one of the topics that came up as a result of our retreat was that at the moment, Oakland shares the same attorney as Collingswood, and we are wondering if that is in the best interest of Oakland to share an attorney. So just want to open that up for discussion, if we should pursue having a different attorney. Sharing an attorney, sharing, using the same attorney that Collingswood uses is new, correct? Within the last few months? I'll just hold it. You've always had the same law firm, but there was two partners in the practice, one of them retired. So I did consider your question. I did speak to the attorney. And again, this is where ethically and being
And again, this is where ethically and being conflicted gets very confusing. But for him to issue a legal opinion on whether he's conflicted would be a conflict. So if that makes sense, because he serves both boards, right? So you're kind of putting him in, in the middle. So if we wanted an official written legal opinion, we would have to get, hire a different attorney to get it like, so the board knows. But I did go back over the bills. The only thing that has really been happening in Oakland where we've needed counsel this year has been like special ed calls and stuff like that. And in that, he's not conflicted. And when there was question at the retreat, or even before the retreat, of doing an RFP for the shared services that you have with Collingswood, I mentioned to the board that if you went that way, I'm conflicted, the attorney's conflicted, and Fred's conflicted, we would all have to step out. So by us doing that, we're kind of keeping it conflict-free, if that makes sense. But if it came to it where it was an issue between Collingswood and Oakland that would need attorney, yeah, you would have to get somebody. But right now, it hasn't, it hasn't risen to that.
I, I mean, fellow board members, tell me what your thoughts are, but the statement from an attorney saying it is a conflict to me to voice my opinion on a conflict, isn't that answer enough that we probably should have a separate attorney?
I disagree, but it's up to you.
It would be easier just to appoint a separate attorney, not, not firm, the firm's fine, but just a separate attorney within the firm.
But if he's now like a solo attorney, like if it's his own firm and he's a solo?
He, he's not, but I know he just, and I go out for RFP for these services every spring. So the next time I would probably do it would be in the, would be in the spring. He just added two additional attorneys, because Cape Part does just more than school law. They do all kinds of law. But he's the educational law partner, but he just added two additional attorneys. So maybe in the spring, a different person will be assigned, but Rob Masili did retire at the end of last school year.
Why can't we do that right now? Not, not going out for an attorney, just, we, we've appointed the firm of Cape Part and Scatchard. Keep them, but tell Cape Part and Scatchard we would like to have a separate attorney within the organization here in Oakland.
Only be needed if we can, like if right now, we're only having special ed stuff where it's not a conflict because they're not doing anything. If, I mean, I agree, if, if something comes up that we had to, then absolutely you have to look at something else, but why pay for something that we're not using? True, that's true, that's true.
And also, the use of an attorney is something that's an unpredictable thing. Like you don't anticipate, hey, we might need an attorney in a few months.
Well, and also, the precedent was we had separate attorneys, so I don't know why that needs to change just because someone retired.
I just, well, it was just staffing at the firm. It's that simple.
So, so at the very least, when we go out for RFP, they will have hired additional people, so it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be an issue at that point, right?
Right, we go out, I go out every spring, I go out every March for the, for the services.
So does the attorney's, does the firm have other attorneys or not? Because I'm just, now I'm unclear.
He just hired two new attorneys. He's the partner. So usually, when we go out for RFP, he's the partner in charge, and then he has like two, like lower attorneys. So usually, like when I call, like I get the, I get the partner, like we get the main attorney. So that is usually who is assigned to your accounts.
Well, incidentally, and this doesn't have a whole lot to do with it, but the partner will charge a higher rate than will the.
He does, but he's kept his rate flat for like four or five years. I kind of, I finagle them when I do the RFP, so they know that, so.
Testing, all right. Does, does the lawyer currently like go over contracts? Are we using them as a shared service in contracts that are going out? Like, so if we hired our own separate attorney, would that be not for just like, you know, what we need an attorney, attorney for, but for like contract review and stuff like that? Would, would it be, would we incur a larger cost at the end of the day having a separate attorney when the other one could be shared? Does that make sense?
Didn't mean to do that. It doesn't want, totally no, I, I have, so I'm just going to hold it. It's a good question. I don't know because I would have to, I honestly don't know the answer. But like I said, Oakland, your legal bills are pretty de minimis compared to Collingswood's. And I did go back over the last several months, and the only calls that were made to the attorney that required anything to do, it was more like due process or special ed, IEP type questions, where there was no conflict. But anytime like a question gets emailed to Fred or I that I think we're conflicted in, I kind, that's why I say in my email, I think I'm conflicted, I'm going to like step out of the room because I don't want to put anybody in jeopardy. And that's kind of what he's, he's doing the same thing at this point. But that's the issue with shared services. It's kind of like we're working for both entities, but when both entities want to like go at it, I have to step out of the room, yeah.
Are they on a retainer, or do we pay?
I don't believe in retainers, so no, that is an absolute no. We only pay for services rendered.
If it's an hourly fee, I know now it's happening to me, if it's an hourly fee, I mean, you don't know what you don't know, and you maybe have to ask the question, but the law firm, especially if we're getting the junior guys, do they, would they, would that same price be honored? So again, I mean, to Colin's point, maybe it's net neutral if we use the same firm and the prices are pretty set.
Right, like when we get RFP, and just see if he can appoint somebody else. Right now, like his, the hourly rate that's charged is one sixty-five, which is not bad at all. So, you know, when we go off RFP, we can, we can look at all that.
Okay, I still think we ought to change now. Just, just call, call them in the morning and say, hey, look, we'd like to appoint one of the separate attorneys, one of the, the underlings for.
I'm going to have to read the RFP because it depends how they responded. Like those attorneys might not, I have to read the, what the RFP said. It might have only listed Joe Betley at the time, because Rob Masili was retiring. I don't know if the other attorneys are in there, so I have to read the contract in the RFP, just to make sure. Right, but he retired, so the last RFP, it was Joe's, Joe Betley's name as the respondent attorney at his hourly rate, so I just want to make sure.
For a minute, but when we appointed the attorney last spring, Rob Masili was still there, and that's who we appointed.
And then he retired like two, no, no? Correct. Retired in June, I think, I have to go back and look. But it's the firm of Cape Part Scatchard and the partner in charge of the educational law unit is usually who you get.
And Cape Part and Scatchard, yes, I, I agree. We, we appointed them and Rob Masili of that group. Now, you're confusing me when you're saying that Joe Betley is this.
I said I have to look at what he responded, not what I published, how he responded to the RFP as to the staff that was listed. You're asking questions I don't know answers to, so I'm telling you, I'm going to research it and get back to you, if that's okay. Wonderful, thank you.
All right, does anyone have anything else for Committee of the Whole?
Just wanted to share a quick update. I always like to share my experience at School Boards Workshop, so always have a really good time. Had the opportunity to attend again this year, and every year, it's really just excellent professional development. So just some quick highlights of, of some of the sessions that I attended. Two sessions in particular focused on school budgets and the, the issues that we're facing ourselves, the sharing Collingswood as well, with, with the two percent caps. One of the things that the presenting districts talked about was really the, the budget as a storytelling narrative, and to really engage the community in some of the ins and outs of the caps and how that really impacts, and will continue to have a greater impact for us. So I found it to be pretty interesting and pretty relevant to the boards here. What else was a good one? The, there was a fantastic one on using AI, which is up and coming in education. Presenting districts had the lens of using AI to support their multiple-tiered system of supports, which would be a lot of what Windsor was talking about, and those different things that were looking to bolster students. So I've applied some of that at my job as well, so it's been pretty interesting doing that. So those were, you know, two, two standout sessions for me. There's one other good one, and I'm totally drawing a blank right now. But normally, I'll send out to the board my notes from the session, so I'll, I'll be sure to send that out so everybody could take a look at that, if you wish. So, yeah, thanks, thanks for the opportunity to attend, as always.
Anyone have anything else?
I just had a small thing, if it's not appropriate, but we had talked about in the Policy Committee, the question, because it came up with a board member from a neighboring district, if we should change our policy about having members of the public give their address when they're making public comment, like their exact address, especially juveniles, which actually a parent of, parent of, of a child that spoke last, in the last school year had mentioned this to me, and I regret that I didn't bring it up sooner. So, yeah, I, I would propose that we have some kind of, if we need to have the address of the speakers in public comment, which I'm not sure if we do.
So.
Did we find out anything about?
Beth Ann prepared like a sign-in sheet, so when we have, go to public comment tonight, people can, so people can write their address, name and address down, and they do not need to say their address on the microphone, so that way it's not shared on YouTube. So, but thank you, that was a great suggestion.
Thank you, sorry, I went on.
No, 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 it's perfect. No, it's good, because now it explains why, why we have paper.
Listen, it's because I remembered that piece of paper that you remembered to make that comment, because there's no way I was going to remember a piece of paper, so.
One, one quick point, circle back to School Boards, I remembered what the other topic was. Sorry. There, there was a really great workshop on onboarding new board members. So being that some seats will be turning over when we have reorg, both here in Oakland and across town in Collingswood, I found that to be pretty, pretty interesting. I, I think, I've been here a minute, so I don't know if it's changed, but I know that the onboarding process for, for new board members is really focused on the finance piece, right, because there's so much. But the, the presenters really shared a lot of thoughts on, you know, opportunities. Talking about collaboration and teamwork amongst the, the district leadership and the new board members, and sharing expectations, that type of thing. I did reach out to our School Boards rep to see if that was something she could replicate for us as a district, once we have new folks coming in. So I haven't heard back yet, but, you know, I assume I will, so I'll forward that along as well. Thanks.
They don't do that weekend thing anymore, right?
You know what, I don't, I don't think so. Yeah, I know we always have a, a brief orientation session for about an hour with the superintendent and I before we swear our new board members in, so they know exactly what to expect. And then anybody who is assigned to the Finance Committee, who's so lucky to be assigned to the Finance Committee, gets another orientation with me on how to read the financial statements. But, yeah, I'd be curious to see what else the school district did.
Suggestion again, that to, if they can go back, I don't know if they can afford to go back, but they did that when Chris and I first got on.
It was like in Princeton, right, you stayed for the weekend or something?
Yeah, and it was, it was great, and that's how, everything was in a weekend, they took care of everything, and you got to meet other boards and other people who were new, and you were learning, and it was better than anything I've seen since.
One more thing, sorry, I know, it's going on a bit, it's a quick question. For those board members that are vacating, what is the process to decide who's going to take their place on the committee, and can we be flexible in rearranging our committees? Okay.
Yeah, we normally do the, again, at the reorg, I bring like, I can't find my words, like slips of paper, like, you know, like for your, thank you, like your, which, which committees you prefer to be in, like rank them one, two, three. And then whoever's board president, we typically give it to them, because the bylaw say the board president seats people, and then they will, whoever the board president in will then assign. But, yeah, we ask for, nobody wants finance, so, but whoever wants what?
All right, hearing nothing else, is there a motion to come out of Committee of the Whole?
Second.
Moved in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are now out of Committee of the Whole. Moving on to Section Five, Important Dates. Thanksgiving is next week, there'll be an early dismissal the day before. There are conferences coming up, the week of December ninth through the twelfth. There's some PTA events listed there. The next board meeting is Tuesday, December seventeenth. The reorg meeting is January seventh. And if you could all save the date for Tuesday, January twenty-first, that's the first regular board meeting of the new year. And we're going to make a Fuss About Bill at that meeting to acknowledge your fifty years of service on the board. And Amy, I hope you come back for it, I will be back for it, so looking forward to that in the new year.
So then, will we have meetings the seventh, the fourteenth, and the twenty-first? Cool.
Yes, yes. January is busy, you got committees and all the, and whoever the liaison to Collingswood is gets like double that, so yay for them. Okay, moving on to Section Six, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the October fifteenth board meeting minutes and the minutes from the board retreat on October nineteenth?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to Section Seven, so this is our first public comment section. Please stand, state your name, kindly write your address on the sheet up here, and keep your comments to five minutes or less. This is for agenda items only. There will be another public comments section at the end of the meeting for additional items. All right, hearing none. Moving on to Section Eight, this is the Superintendent's Report, Dr. McDowell.
So, good evening, everyone. Section Eight starts with the enrollment report. October twenty twenty-three, enrollment was two seventy. October twenty twenty-four is two seventy-three, and that is attached. Eight point zero two and eight point zero three are the safety drill and suspension reports, and there is no anti-bullying report. One quick announcement, this evening, actually, right now, we are currently inducting forty-one students into the National Honor Society. Because of the sensitive nature of the ceremony, we will be putting out the list of students with that accomplishment in the coming weeks. But I'm pretty proud of the work that our kids are doing, and just wanted to make sure that that was on the official record. Thank you.
Great, moving on to Section Nine, the Business Administrator Report. That's it.
All right, so Item nine point zero one is your October monthly budget transfers. Nine point zero two is your Board Secretary and Treasurer's reports. Nine point zero three is the listing of the purchase orders for the month of November. And in nine point, I just lost count. Nine point zero four is the list of the bills to be paid tomorrow morning, pending approval. And just a little update, as I said before, the audit has been complete, it's due to Trenton on January fifteenth, so hopefully in the month of December, or if not December, January, either the auditor himself or I will be presenting the audit to the board.
Great, Section Ten, this is Finance Committee, Jimmy.
I feel like the Finance Committee got a lot of flack over here, over this conversation. So wait, no, don't ruin it. All right, so regular business is ten point zero one, the approval of budget, budget transfers. Ten point oh two and three, approval of certifications and over expenditures. Ten point oh four is the approval Secretary Treasurer reports. And, yeah, ten point oh five and ten point oh six is the approval of purchase orders and warrants, as described earlier. Ten point oh seven is the ESEA grant submission for titles one, two, and four, and to approve and to approve staff salaries for title 1, as mentioned in the agenda. 10.08 is, uh, the move on the recommendation to the superintendent to approve the big wow, Mr. Boom Boom... Man. To present, yeah, I, I looked it up, he's real, he's really cool. He's gonna present, uh, an assembly to the preschool classes on February 5th through, uh, the 3rd through the 5th at 275 bucks, which is, looking at his YouTube, that's a great deal.
Are we?
I know, right? 10.09, Little League. Denise, you asked about the Little League using the indoor facilities?
Believe the indoor is not available.
Okay.
Anyone, do you have an update?
Yeah, I did, I did email Mike, I don't think that backed him.
Yeah. But this, so this is for the outdoor space?
Yeah, okay. 10-10, we got good news, Healthy Kids is coming for Christmas break on December 23rd, 27th, and the 30th, and for spring break, which is, uh, April 21st through the 25th. And then 10-11 is Healthy Kids Summer Camp, that's starting June 23rd and ending August 15th for use of facilities from 7:30 to 5:00 PM. So that's, uh, that's that.
Alright, is there a motion to approve 10.01 through 10.11?
So moved. Second.
Moved in seconded. Are there any questions from board members about any of those items? Alright, hearing none, honorable call, please.
Mrs. Ezekiel?
Yes.
Mrs. Fappell?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Mrs. Rotondo?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Bushko?
Yes.
Alright, section 11, this is the curriculum and personnel committee, Todd.
Alright, good evening, everyone. For item 11.01, we're seeking to approve a fifth grade, fifth grade field trip to Independence Hall and the Constitution Center. Still waiting to be asked to chaperone one of these trips. Item 11.02, we're seeking approval for our 2025, 2026 preschool plan and projected enrollments. Item 11.03, we're seeking approval for the following substitute listed there. And item 11.04, we're seeking to approve a travel expense that was attended, there was a leadership conference there. So we're seeking approval on items 11.01 through 11.04.
Alright, is there a motion to approve those items? Moved in seconded, any questions from board members?
Just a quick question on the preschool. How many preschool classrooms do we have, five?
I'm looking at Jake.
Yes, which maxes our, our preschool population out at 75.
No, one room is not one of the general rooms, it's preschool disabled.
I'm sorry, I want, who?
One room is a preschool disabled, so that does not have 15 students. So right now, we're maxed out at 56 students, because that's what we approved for last year.
And how about going forward? I, I thought the, and I...
Yeah, you're right, we are asking for a fifth classroom for Oakland, because there's currently a waitlist for the regular ed preschool here.
Do we have room for that? Okay, but we have room for another classroom? Okay, good.
Alright, honorable call, please.
Mrs. Ezekiel?
Yes.
Mrs. Fappell?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Mrs. Rotondo?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Here, let me guess.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Bushko?
Yes. Moving on to section 12, the community relations and policy committee, Teresa.
Sorry, um, item 12.01 is the Collingswood board report. Mr. Tabey?
Thank you. At our Collingswood meeting, was it last week? Two weeks ago? I don't know. Solber, that was committee. Yeah, that was three weeks ago, alright. Yeah. Sent out updates along with the agenda. Congratulations to Dean, who will be our OPS representative on the board there. He was sworn in. We have our school safety presentation there as well, and our district testing report, much of which we saw tonight, which was awesome, first time for Oakland. It was great, great, very cool to see. Some important dates coming up. Collingswood Middle School, first market period report cards are out today. So hop on Genesis if you haven't already. Next board meeting will be the 25th. And just of note, the Collingswood Holiday Parade will be on the 30th. It's always a fun, fun day out. Superintendent's report included our first Hispanic heritage month celebration, which was a huge hit. High school also hosted the 22nd Annual Oktoberfest. That involves multiple districts throughout Camden County. So it's a real nice feather in the cap of our high school. Buildings and grounds, approve the comprehensive maintenance plan, four-year, approve the four-year building capacity comprehensive grant, and approval to accept the funds for the high-impact tutoring program. Curriculum committee just updated the calendars to account for dismissal times and early dismissals. No changes were made to the calendar. Let's see, those are the major updates. There was one question on the Gateway to College program, so I was able to get some updates there. That was approved during that meeting. It's approval of partnership with Camden County College for students who are either dropped out of high school or who are at risk for dropping out. So our partnership with the Camden County College, the Blackwood Campus, that allows our students who are at risk or have dropped out to, um, obtain their credits to gain their high school diploma and to gain college credits as they're doing it. So they partner with the district for tutors, counselors. There's no cost to the students, and any students are able to apply, either from Collingswood or Oakland. They just have, have to apply for the program. So, uh, college credit, yeah, I think I covered all of that there. So that is it for Collingswood report.
Quick question for you, you mentioned the, the high-impact tutoring program? It was that, did you say, is that secondary high school, district-wide? You may have mentioned, I just, I...
Not, yeah, I didn't have it in my updates, just that it was a high-impact. I, I typically only include things that are secondary, since that's what pertains to us, so it may just be middle and I.
It is, it is secondary.
Secondary, yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you. Item 12.02 is the PTA liaison report, Ms. Rotondo.
Thanks, Teresa. There was no November meeting, but there's still some things going on worth mentioning. This Thursday, there is a pre-K and K family event. It's free for all OPS pre-K and kindergarten students. This Friday, at 6:45, there is a game night. It's another free event for Oakland students and families. The PTA winter event has been scheduled, that is December 14th. Just looking at my time here, 12 to 1:30 here in the cafeteria. There's gonna be a special guest from the North Pole. And that is another free event for all OPS students and families. There were, there was the spirit ware sale and the stocks pound cake sale, and those were really, really successful. Lada wanted to extend things, and so does the whole PTA for everybody who supported that. And then, um, there are, if you saw it in passing, there were poppy pinwheels and mums outside at the memorial for Veterans Day. And then there is going to be a PTA meeting on December 3rd here in the library at 6:30. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 12.03 is a MASC report, Ms. Bushko.
Great. MASC hosted a gym night last Friday night. There were 60 kids in attendance with four counselors and five chaperones. It was a successful event. The next one will be Friday, December 13th. And that's it for MASC.
Thank you. Item 12.04 is the Oakland Education Foundation report. I'm happy to say I connected with the president, Kim Love, today, and they're trying to arrange a meeting before the Thanksgiving holiday. And really, the focus is to recruit some more adults and parents and community members to join the foundation. Item 12.05 is a policy up for first reading. It is 8467, the firearms and weapons policy. Item 12.06 is a policy for second reading, 8420, emergency and crisis situations revised. Item 12.07, regulations, and this is just one reading. The two are 3160 physical examination and 4160, also physical examination for different staff groups. There are no reported HIB reports for 12.08, so we are seeking approval for items 12.05 through 12.08.
Is there a motion to approve those items?
So moved.
Moved in seconded, any questions from board members? Alright, honorable call.
Mrs. Ezekiel?
Yes.
Mrs. Fappell?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Mrs. Rotondo?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Bushko?
Yes.
Section 13 miscellaneous, um, seeking approval for the standing orders governing the treatment in case of emergencies for the 2024, 2025 school year. And that is posted in the administrative content. Is there a motion to approve that item?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded, any questions from board members? Alright, honorable call.
Mrs. Ezekiel?
Yes.
Mrs. Fappell?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Mrs. Rotondo?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer, Mrs. Schaefer. Miss, Mr. Schaefer.
Yes, here.
Mrs. Bushko?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, section 14, this is the second public comment section. This is for any item you wish to bring before the board. Please stand, state your name, and write your address on the paper up front. Alright, hearing none. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright. We are into, excuse me. Have a great night, everyone, thank you.